Welcome to this evening's economic update. We are very pleased to have this special opportunity to have city council and budget committee members and staff and probably a few friends in the audience as well. So, thank you for being here and I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Linda Norris and she's going to present the evening.
Yes, I'll just give a brief introduction. This is the second year we've had Dr. Tim Dewey come and present to us to give us information about the national Oregon and then local economy. We've started doing this every year prior to finishing our financial forecast and then going into our annual budget. I think most people know who Dr. Dewey is. He has an MS and a PhD in economics from the University of Oregon. His work experience includes time in Washington DC with the US Department of Treasury as an economist in their International Affairs Division. Tim has also consulted for clients in the financial industry and was responsible for monitoring the activities of the Federal Reserve and currency markets. In 2002, he returned to the University of Oregon and is the author of several economic indices and is published in the Journal of Economics and Business. So, as I said, he'll be focusing on Salem tonight but also putting the information in the context of what's happening in the United States and the state and probably a little bit about what's happening in the world. So, we really appreciate him being here again and for the work that he does for City of Salem and monitoring our economic indices.
Well, thank you very much. I always feel like I'm brought in to deliver bad news lately. So, I'm pretty sure that things will be looking up when I don't show up one November, December at some point in the future. So, here's what we're going to do today. A status report on the US economy. Think about what are the odds of recession since that's been in the news a lot lately? Status report on the Oregon economy and think about what kind of recession would occur if there was to be one? Would Oregon hit worse than other areas in the country? And what's the status of the recovery in this region as well? And given that status, what should we expect from local revenue sources? So, at the beginning of this year, I was actually becoming quite a bit optimistic, at least by my standards. Started to have a lot of good data roll in on the national sector, on the state sector. On the state, jobs numbers started picking up quite aggressively at the end of last year and the beginning of last year, at the beginning of this year and you can see that jump up at the end there. And then suddenly, things started to turn down. My index of economic indicators started to roll over in the middle of this year and then rolled over into what we'd consider a high probability of recession. And then on Oregon non-farm payrolls, job growth just sort of stagnated all of a sudden. And this was an unfortunate development to say the least. There was never much hope for a strong rebound in the US economy and consequently regional economies, local economies. But at the same time, there was at least expectations of pretty steady, albeit weak by traditional standards, growth. But then it seemed like in the middle of each year, something happened that certainly derailed the train on the national side. And what was that? Well, one part that really played into the story was the commodity price shock we suffered through in the early part of this year. And this is the crude materials index for crude materials for further processing, a pretty broad-based commodity measure. And you could see that there's basically a trend that's been in place since the beginning of this decade. And we jumped above that trend quite aggressively going into the recession and then dropped below it. And the bounce back is really what caught us by surprise. I don't think a lot of people expected commodity prices to shoot up quite as quickly. And certainly, energy prices, in particular oil prices and gasoline prices were part of that equation. And that certainly was something that took the wind out of consumer spending in the first part of this year. And also caught firms in something of a bind. Firms aren't sure what to do. Should they raise prices or be more cautious going forward? I think a lot of firms tried to raise prices in this period of time that didn't necessarily work out very well, given how weak consumer spending turned out to be. On top of that, we also had this issue of fiscal contraction. I think that despite the concerns that fiscal spending on Washington is out of control, if we look at real government expenditures, federal, state, and local, we can see that that's really turned over. This is changed from a year ago and we're in negative territory. So, certainly that federal stimulus wore off as the year progressed, as last year progressed and we got into this year. And that is certainly something that's weighing on activity as well. The economy in general was not strong enough to really be able to propel itself forward without that government stimulus. On top of that, and talk a little bit about this too, certainly the issue that the financial markets have suffered from fears that Europe is going into a severe financial crisis and likely a recession. Arguably, they're already in a severe financial crisis and almost certainly a recession and it's really a question of how deep their recession becomes. And on top of that, we've still had the hangover from the housing market that was keeping everything under a certain tight lid. The growth, the underlying growth was just never expected to be great to begin with. But you can see here, the blue line was real gross domestic product and it was starting to rise at least at a rate that would help to catch up with the pre-trend, a pre-recession level of output. But now, it's pretty much stalled out and we're trending somewhere south of that position we were in going into the recession. The challenge there is that we really need to get up back to where we were prior to the recession. And that's the kind of growth that would see strong job growth, see drop, lowering unemployment rates. But we're just not seeing that and most forecasts do not have that kind of growth embedded in them. Particularly in the near term, even the longer-term forecasts from the Federal Reserve suggest that this state of affairs is going to continue for quite a long time. So, when I look at what's been going on in the state, I've been using one measure, the University of Oregon Index of Economic Indicators. And certainly, that has pushed itself into recessionary territory. Over the past six months, more than 5% decline on an annualized basis and more than half the indicators have been declining. Now, one question is that some of that might be a little bit overly pessimistic, given that at least one variable in that measure, consumer confidence, has dropped quite a bit lower than one might expect, given where our spending has actually been. But at the same time, there does seem to be a lot of stress on consumer spending. Disposable income is quite a bit lower. Savings rates have dropped dramatically, which would suggest consumers are struggling to maintain their standard of living. Although some jobs are being created in the US as a whole, wage growth is nothing spectacular at all. And I have another measure that I've just been working on and this is a zero on this measure corresponds to average growth over the last, since 1990. And the dark lines here are real Oregon, personal income less transfer payments. So, this is personal income households receive minus the transfer payments, so payments from the government they receive, so unemployment insurance, for example, social security. So, trying to get at what is the underlying economy generating in terms of wages, dividends, interest, Oregonians? And then deflating that by, in order to account for inflation. So, that's adjusted for inflation then. And where we are now, as a state is growing at some rate that's lower than, again, what we've experienced on average over the last 20 years or so. And that would be consistent with relatively lower revenue growth than, you know, we would like to see, somewhere between 0 and 2% at this time, year over year, which is going to correspond to no rapid rebound in state financing as well. And that's obviously going to weigh on the ability of the state to add jobs or add services to serve the public. So, you know, my view, given the data I've seen, is that odds are better than even of having a recession, high enough that planning should include the possibility of a recession. You're not going to see this evolve in the near-term data. Some of, you know, my indicators have pointed that way. But that said, if you look at the overall indicators and what the National Business Bureau of Economic Research would tell you would be a recession, you're not going to see that in those types of indicators just yet. If a recession did emerge, it's going to somehow, it's going to emerge somewhere in the first half of next year. And I think what the real story is, as far as why you would expect a possibility of recession, is the evolution of the European fiscal financial crisis and the possibility that that really blows back through the US financial system initiates another credit crunch, such as what we recently experienced. And/or, I think the other factor that could fall through, could feed through to the US is via some of the trade channels. So, lower export growth. And export growth and particularly manufacturing products has been something of a bright spot in this recovery and anything that derails that would be unfortunate. The European crisis is quite, quite serious. I believe that the real question is, is do they have a recession or a depression? That that is a situation that is not going to go away anytime soon, unfortunately. And that's where the financial markets are very cautious and I would say the low levels of interest rates are certainly signaling that there's something to be cautious about. I will though add that the rates of growth that we've seen are so relatively low for coming out of recession in particular. Unemployment is very high. We know there's a lot of stress on the household budgets. I think that in that environment, you could see bouncing around low rates and low growth rates and see that as repeated recession scares. So, I think that there's some questions. We don't really see a lot of economies operate as the US economy is operating right now. There's no real good precedent for an economy that has not bounced back more aggressively and the precedents are quite depressing when you think of the Great Depression or Japan and that might be some type of model that we're following, at least in the near term. Now, what this has really played out for in a lot of local areas is continued stagnation of revenue. And one of the reasons that we see that is declining property values and that's obviously started to cut into assessed valuations and that has been a critical factor in a lot of metro areas at this point. And then any other sources of revenue that suffer because of lack or limited business activity. Oh, this is where that slide went to. So, this is my question about the too pessimistic. The red line here is Michigan consumer sentiment and you can see that's dropped back to pre-recessionary levels, but consumer spending year over year hasn't dropped back that aggressively. But what's gone on in the background too is a sharp decline in savings rates as the consumers have really struggled to hold on to the gains, the meager gains that they have achieved since the recession ended. So, what kind of recession would we see? Well, I don't think we're likely to see some kind of repeat of what we just experienced, thank goodness. And one of the reasons is that many of our traditional industries have still not rebounded from the recession. And that would leave us something more similar to 1990 where you had a slowdown in hiring. Or, I guess another example would be the sort of mini-recession we had in 2003 when you actually had a drop in hiring activity and drop in job growth, but not as severe as the recession that preceded it. And the reason is, we can look at a number of industries throughout Oregon and recognize that they've never recovered from the downturn. This is transportation equipment, manufacturing, employees, and that obviously that number dropped dramatically as a number of firms in Eugene area went under and consequently have not come back and those jobs have not come back. And this is really somewhat different than prior deep recessions. In most prior deep recessions, the demand for the product was still there after the recession. It was more of a temporary issue. This recession has many more permanent effects. And of course, another one like that would be the housing industry as well, where housing construction has dropped to very low levels and really hasn't bounced back up. And of course, once you're near zero, dropping down further is really very difficult. And some parts of the state are near zero as far as construction activity or close enough to zero, that it's hard to tell the difference. So, will Oregon be hit worse? Last decade, we've seen Oregon be relatively sensitive to the national business cycle and I don't think we've seen any reason to believe that has changed in recent months. And this is using that relationship between national and Oregon non-farm payrolls, percentage change year over year. The relationship would be the blue predicted change and then the red here is the actual change for Oregon relative to what the nation's been doing. And what you can see is if the lines are there matching, the relationship really hasn't changed that much, is that we're a little bit more sensitive. Percentage point increase in US jobs over a year translates into about 1.5 percentage point increase in Oregon jobs. And then on the upside and unfortunately on the downside too. So, we've become a little bit more sensitive this past decade than we saw in the prior decade. So, the state's growing at below-average rate. Job gains stalled out. I don't think recession is out of the picture and then we're still going to see continued pressure on state revenues. So, getting to, then drilling down to what we're seeing in this area. We constructed last year Salem area business index and I've updated that for this presentation. Lodging revenue has started to come back a little bit, certainly well off the peaks. We're seeing an increase in lodging revenue throughout the state and actually throughout the country. Some of the consumer activity that has come back has come back in the form of travel and tourism and this is showing up in the data. Initial unemployment claims in this region dropped but still remain elevated relative to what we had prior to the recession. And that would suggest that firms are still under pressure to lay off workers, but certainly nothing like we saw in the recession, the depth of the recession. That little jump at the end of the series in the second quarter of this year was tied to a change in benefits that allowed for an extension. So, there were some refilings due to that. Part of that's been dissipated in the most recent data. Solid waste, and this is a story that's going on throughout the state, is that we saw a big run-up in solid waste collected throughout virtually every metro area in Oregon and then a downturn and it hasn't bounced back. And certainly part of that's the lack of the construction industry making its way into the waste stream. And some of it, some recycling is probably holding that down, but your real issue here is that the generation of waste has slowed as the economy has slowed. Residential building permits, this is by value, has also dropped and not come back at all. We saw a little bit of a bounce in the end of 2009, but that faded out. If we look at this relative to the average of the two years before the recession, you can see how much lost taxable value would be in that yellow area there. And so, that's a number that just keeps growing unfortunately. There's some, I think there's some concern that nationwide, really not building houses as fast as we should be at this point, but that's partly tied up to the lack of job growth. Particularly also, lack of job opportunities for younger workers, which is forcing them back into their homes with their families and that is helping to weigh on the demand for new housing. Residential home sales, again, have been sliding since 2005 and have been leveling out in the past year, but they're at relatively lower levels and again, not really going very far. And non-farm payrolls have continued to decline. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. So, we put this together in the Salem area business index and what we see is the run-up to the recession and the drop of the recession, then we've basically been trending sideways since 2009. A lot of stagnation essentially in the economic environment has been the story that's really been told in a lot of metro areas in Oregon, is that things aren't getting worse as quickly as one might, as certainly as, well, things aren't really getting worse, but they're really not getting much better either. So, that's a consistent challenge. So, the recovery just has been disappointingly slow. What are we seeing compared to other metropolitan areas? So, I've got another index because this is what I do. I sit around and play with data. And this is a new one that you'll start seeing a little bit more frequently, like as in monthly. So, this is Salem Index of Economic Activity and it's composed of a bunch of numbers in the background. And it's like the Oregon one I showed earlier, where zero is average growth and anything above zero is above average growth and anything below zero is below average growth. And yeah, I think the story you can tell here is if you look at the recession, what would be about 2001 there, the regional economy slowed down a little bit, but not terribly so. That we're pretty close to average growth in this region during that period of time. We saw a similar acceleration in activity during the housing bubble that everyone saw. And then a sharp drop in activity in this recession hit this state, this locality a little bit harder this time around because the state was hit that much harder. And part of that was the state had arguably had some room to trim some fat the first time around, but you couldn't get away with that the second time around. There was a lot more significant issues as far as the budget goes. If I look at the same thing for Portland area, and unfortunately, I don't have identical data across these areas, but I think the story is still one that we can, but one that makes sense, is the 2001 recession hit that region a lot harder and weighed on that region for a couple of years, then the same run-up during the housing bubble and sharp fall. But Portland area has really rebounded a little bit more quickly than other areas in the state as far as getting back up to somewhat normal growth rates. Now, normal for this past decade, by the way, is not exactly spectacular, I guess to put that to begin with, but still, normal relative to what's been going on in the last decade. And that's, if we did this for all the local areas in Eugene, or in the state, it'd be the same story. The real strong area, stronger area has been Portland metro area. And part of the challenge, I think, for all the state and local, or all the regional areas is the economy has changed in such a way that a lot of jobs are just accruing to the high-density regions, bigger metropolitan areas. And that's certainly, again, a challenge that we're all facing at this point. So, how's that really played out for jobs around here? Salem non-farm payrolls. This is a graph I used last year and I said, well, we have a couple of different options, whether we sort of had this baseline scenario, which was a normal cyclical rebound that we've seen in the past, a jobless recession for a year and that would be the green line and then something more like a normal rebound. And then the jobless recession too, where we stagnated for two years. And so, how is this tracking out? Well, you can just see how that blue line there has extended to being slightly lower than the green or the purple line. And this would sort of be the point where you'd have to make a decision, are you in jobless recession one or jobless recession two? And it's certainly looking like jobless recession two was the way to go as far as forecasts. Now, this is only through June and then I ran the numbers again and this is what happened in July, August, and September. So, that created sort of a bit of a question mark for me because that was not just a little bit off, that was a lot off. And how am I supposed to interpret that at this point? Because I really haven't seen much evidence that job growth should have decelerated that much in the absence of an outright recession. And I had to track down through the Labor Department what they were seeing, the Employment Department. And one of the, one of the issues is, this is, this is something of a difficult conversation. The way, the way that some of this data is collected has been changed and taken out of local hands and put in the hands of people in the East Coast, is along the shore of it. And as a consequence, sometimes the numbers get a little funky until some options for time for revision comes along. And one of those places is here, the local education number, which dropped 3,400 in the span of a year, 32%. Now, most local areas have seen some stress on their education systems and some teacher layoffs, but nothing of this magnitude. And so, this number is suspect and I think likely to be revised going forward. And there's another number here that I'm told is suspect by the local employment people and that's food manufacturing, which has also dropped quite a bit compared to the past year. And doesn't seem that there's any reason to believe that that's really happened in the background. So, most of the drop that we've seen in the past couple of months, I think is going to be revised away at some point. If it's not, then things are actually quite a bit worse than I imagined. So, let's hope that this is getting revised away. So, my thought is that really we should, we should be thinking of us as still stuck in the jobless recovery and the extended jobless recovery, where over the next year, our hopes for a lot of gains should be held in check. I think the drop that we're seeing is suspicious and likely the data, likely the result of poor data collection, although it's probably not collection, it's more of a, again, analysis. I think that overall though, you're really looking at this continued stagnation scenario in local revenues, which is what, again, we're seeing in a lot of regions. And it does fit with the projections of revenue that I was provided. The red line here is the, basically the pre-recession trend of growth in revenues and where we would expect to be going forward. And the blue line is where we've actually ended up being, that yellow area is the cumulative shortfall, which is getting quite big relative to where our expectations would have been. So, that's, and that's obviously going to continue to get bigger because there's no real story I can tell of jumping back to that pre-recession operating revenue trend anytime soon. And that's, again, a story that I'm able to tell in a lot of metro areas unfortunately because it's the same situation in Bend, same situation in Eugene. I haven't looked at the Portland operating revenues number, but that's, that is the challenge right now. And obviously, this is in nominal terms and doesn't include for rising costs. And so, in real terms, certainly this is, represents a drop in revenues, not just the stagnation. So, where does that leave us? Well, I think last, your story is still holding, is that considering, considering that a return to pre-recession plans looks unlikely, we're still faced with this ongoing issue of dealing with these ongoing financing, financial gaps, trying to reduce spending growth, cutting programs, finding efficiencies. Unfortunately, by two or three years into this, cutting fat is harder. I think we all know that. Controlling compensation growth. And this is obviously something the state's been doing as well, trying to control the growth of healthcare costs, making employees pay for part of the healthcare, holding out wages. There's not a lot of room for new programs in this kind of environment and then there's always the issue of trying to gain additional revenue for the additional fees. But that's also a challenge in this environment because it is stressful on, obviously, the recipients of those fees. And that's, unfortunately, we're not like the federal government. We can't just print up some bonds and go into deficit spending. We're stuck with, we're stuck with the tax base we have and the spending patterns we can make with that. And there's not, there's not a lot of wiggle room, especially as we get deeper and deeper into this period of stagnation. And that's my 35 minutes, almost exactly.
All right. We'll take questions. I see Councilor Clem and then Councilor Nanki and then Councilor Clausen.
Tim, thanks for the quick presentation and informational. The Salem operating revenue, is that property taxes and fees?
Property taxes, free and fees. A wide range of fees, right.
Okay, so...
I believe it's all sources of operating revenue, correct?
That's exactly.
So, fine, forfeiture, state shared revenue, all of the fees that we have in the general plan.
So, the prediction for the next year is?
It's flat.
It's flat, okay.
And part of that's due to the declining property tax revenue. Some million dollars shaved off of that expectation.
Okay. And that's due to declining property values?
Right. And, right, exactly.
Okay. And then my other question was, we used to use the word stagflation back in the 80s. Stagnation plus... Stagnation plus inflation. I'm sure there's a much better term for it, but what are the implications of inflation and PERS costs to the city?
Right. So, at least back in the 70s and 80s when we had inflation, we had it backed up with higher wage growth and this higher tax revenue stream. Exactly, these two things were going on. Right now, we've got something of a different challenge. Obviously, inflation is still increasing at about 2% rate, but where revenue growth just is not, is not keeping up with that at all. And that's a further tightening of regional budgets. And the same thing for the increase in PERS costs is there's no way to absorb that through revenue increases because revenue increases aren't going. And so, you have to find other creative ways to absorb that. And creative, unfortunately, always means, increasingly is meaning cutting services to compensate for that job, for that loss.
And adding to those numbers of fewer government employees.
And adding to those numbers of fewer government employees. There is, these are, I would argue that we're stuck in a very bad equilibrium where we can't, because the national economy will not grow fast enough, we can't lift ourselves out of this situation. And that's the overarching challenge, is that in the near term, we should have a lot more growth and a lot more activity, but we're just not seeing that.
Have you had any exposure to how this, the state of Oregon is looking at dealing with itself, the rising or the new increases in PERS and how that, is it just?
Well, certainly one thing that's been done is to try to cut the healthcare cost part of the equation and limit that growth, right? That's been, that's been an avenue. There was the, trying to limit wage growth would be another way that that's been dealt with. So, that's my understanding of the approaches that have been done. One approach that hasn't played out is having employees pay their 6% share too. That's another avenue, shifting the cost. I mean, it certainly doesn't make the costs go away, it just shifts them. Unfortunately, that's what we're, all we're talking about, shifting costs or reducing benefits or reducing services at that, that job should deal with that, that issue.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Dewey. Nice to see you again this year, bringing us good news.
Just in time for the holidays.
Yes. Question on a couple of things from the national perspective in regard to supercommittee stuff and federal budget-type issues right now. If they fail, what impact does that have through the chain down to us?
Well, you know, sort of, yeah, what if they fail? And if they fail, there's some automatic cuts that are supposedly going into effect, and that will exacerbate the fiscal downturn that we're already seeing. I don't think that's going to lead to some miracle period of confidence in the economy. I think that quite the opposite is going to happen. It's going to take another leg out of economic activity. I'm hesitant to believe that those cuts will actually go through if the committee fails. But what could happen, though, is another ugly congressional debate.
Probably another downgrade as well, particularly?
Yeah, well, hopefully not a downgrade, but another ugly debate. And I think your issue there is we're heading into an election year, there's only so much pain congressional members are going to want to, members of Congress are going to want to endure going into this year. The same question is also on the payroll tax credit, which is expected to expire at the end of this year, and, you know, that's 2%, which is real money, believe it or not, aggregated over enough people. So, that's another issue that needs to be voted on before December 31st. So, the unfortunate situation is that there is some additional uncertainty in the fiscal outlook. And overall, overall, there's not a lot of push for additional fiscal stimulus, right? What we're talking about here is how to moderate the downside. We're not even talking about how to really boost the upside.
I'll add if I may. Looking back to '07, moving into '08, as far as how the market took the big dive there. The other day, I was just looking at the Dow Jones, and right now, we've made a couple of bumps and we're almost paralleling that identically at a lower level. So, I'll throw out a prediction that maybe February, March, everything goes flat again. When that happens, how does that impact the rest of the system?
That, so, there's going to be two or three channels we're talking about. I've written that I don't think we're going to see that decrease in stock prices until it's obvious in corporate profits, which means that corporations will start struggling to try to shore up their profits, which generally is a word for rightsizing, and that's a way to lay off people. And that's one consequence that you'll see. And then if the stock markets did dive significantly, then there's the issue of wealth effect. There is a, there's pretty good chance that a lot of the spending that's being driven in the economy over this past year is really being driven by upper-income households. And they tend to be more sensitive to asset market changes like that. So, for example, you see a diversion in sales growth where the dollar stores tell you they're struggling, but Nordstrom's doing okay. And that's this concern that the way that the recovery has benefited a narrower sector of the population. Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Clausen?
I have a few questions, if you don't mind. Thanks for the presentation. It's always helpful to get some perspective on everything. I think maybe the first question that's priority on my mind is, is there a foreseeable future where we could be looking at a net decrease in property taxes? I mean, this year, we're enjoying a 0.9%.
1.9%.
1.9%.
Oh, that's right.
So, a net decrease in actual income, is that realistic in the near future?
Well, that's, that is still a possibility if housing prices don't start to stabilize. And that's, some, luckily, I mean, the interesting thing here is Oregon has, in some sense, long-suffered under the inability to raise property taxes because, because obviously, it's tied to the Measure V assessed values, which didn't rise very quickly. So, on one hand, that obviously restrained revenue growth, but it also restrained spending growth. So, there's a lot of parts in the country that actually saw, you know, very steep declines in tax revenues as property values grew because they weren't, they didn't have any lockdown in place like we did. And so, that's really kept us from falling as dramatically. Now, though, you could start to see us actually having decreases in local property tax revenue if, if we don't get some more aggressive home price growth. And it's, you know, you're starting to see some stabilization at the very bottom end of the market, I would say. Those are the houses that are most affordable and can get cash flow positive for investors more quickly for rental purposes. The upper-income housing has still been struggling to move and find a footing. There's just fewer buyers in that market. And that is a concern that you go from flattening out to some mild negatives. Luckily, the only good side is that we should be most of the way through the price decreases. And so, whatever declines you would see would be relatively moderate.
Okay. Thank you. Jump-shifting a little bit, and your points where the drops in education and the food manufacturing, are those numbers not realistic in terms of, I mean, we had...
I think they dropped too much. They're not realistic in the fact that they shouldn't have dropped year over year so dramatically.
Well, I'm just thinking, because we just cut, what, how much out, 40 million out of our schools' budget this last year?
Oh, and, but, but that's probably more like a 10% decrease in, rather than a 30% decrease. So, we're still, we really need to get those, but that's, all school districts in Oregon cut. But that, the outcomes was not that, was not that aggressive.
We also closed a cannery here too this last year, which was a big job source for us in food manufacturing, so...
So, I'll have to clarify. I went and contacted the state labor economist on that too, see if, what he was thinking on those lines. Again, those were, those were the, those were the numbers that jumped out at me when I saw them, and they were jumping out at him as well, so...
So, we might realistically see a correction.
You might see a correction, but the overall number is still, you know, we're not getting, we're not getting any bounce back. I mean, certainly, you can see some upward revision, I think, in that data, but still, the overall data is, is down from last year and falling closer, much closer to my, you know, long-term jobless recession forecast than, than anything else.
Okay. We got one follow-up, it's okay, I got a quick one. What is the trend in national personal indebtedness? I know you mentioned that our savings have gone down quite a bit. Is the indebtedness staying steady or...
In debt is, personal debt as a percentage of personal income has been falling. Hustle debt as a percentage of personal income has been falling. It's still at high levels. Hustles aren't really taking on a lot of debt right now, obviously. The one category of debt that has been going out quite greatly, quite dramatically is student loans. And that's where, that's where you're seeing some significant increases in debt, which makes sense.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim, fascinated by the discussion about essentially for the next couple of years, or at least the outlook is, remains flat as it has been for the last two years. Is that a basic characterization?
That's my, that's my fear, particularly for these local regions.
So, inflation is 3% a year, given that revenues are, at the best side, going to be flat.
Right.
Then we need to make 3% cuts.
At least, and your inflation might be different, though, than, than the state inflation. With the US inflation rate of 2, which will end up being somewhere between 2, 2.5%, your inflation rates might be higher. And the reason for that is the basket of goods that you buy is going to be different than the basket of goods the average consumer buys. Your basket of goods is probably going to have much more high-cost labor, unfortunately. I mean, you understand.
Sure.
And...
Fuel.
Could be fuel is another one I was thinking of. That's another, much more energy-intensive, a lot of energy-intensive sectors, right? Police cars, fire trucks, all these things are critical services. And that's, so, I would expect your revenue structure to actually grow at a faster rate than inflation in this environment. Your cost structure, I'm sorry, your cost structure.
Right. It looks like...
Too bad. I believe they're in a story the other way around, wasn't it?
We think our cuts are going to be closer to the 6% range that we're going to need to do to get through this time period.
That's, that, you know, that sounds more, more likely than the 3%, yes.
Well, you're a conversation killer.
No, I'm sorry. Well, I've been working on the financial forecast, so I can understand. Do you see any, you know, when we talk about this, I remember three years ago, I was thinking we're going to be in this situation for about five years, and now I'm thinking we're going to be in this situation for about five more years. Do you see anything that would be happening in that horizon that would change this significantly?
I've tried to tell stories that gets you a rapid rebound and, and in the absence of some strong source of demand, the way this was supposed to work, the way this was supposed to work is that we're supposed to have a much more aggressive export recovery than we have. And we've had a pretty good one, but I think what we really expected to see was a much more aggressive one than what we've had on one hand. And we expected a little bit more correction in housing, at least construction. And so, where I see the possibility for some growth is eventually, people are going to want to move out of their homes, out of their parents' house. And eventually, as we get a little bit more job growth, that will occur. And we're seeing some, some types of construction rebound. So, for example, multifamily housing is a little bit better throughout the nation. And so, that's, that's there as a possible source of demand. The rest of the globe is not growing quite that quickly right now, so I'm a little bit worried about the external side. But, but other sources of rapid growth, I just have a hard time identifying them in this, in this current environment. What we've got is growth that is between 2% and 3%, which is about what we need to keep the unemployment rate from rising or falling. And it's easy to tell that story. It's much more difficult to tell stories where you have a sudden acceleration. Generally, if you have those sudden accelerations, they happen in the early stages of recovery. The last sudden acceleration we had was dependent upon the housing bubble. So, I think it's unlikely we're going to do that again. And then we could talk about a stock market bubble, but we did that in the 1990s, and I think it's unlikely that we'd do that again. So, even your more, even your better forecasts of how you get back to that pre-recession trend involve growth of 3.5%, which then gets you there in four or five years. And that's better than what we have. But if you look back at the mid-1980s, growth was just quarter after quarter after quarter of very rapid economic activity that really launched us out, or pulled us out of that 1982 recession very quickly. And we had nothing like that kind of recovery this time around. And it's, I just have a hard time finding where that source of growth is suddenly supposed to come from. You know, I think that, again, a good story gets you back to 3.5% growth, which we, which put us on the right path. Not very quickly, but it would put us on the right path.
And just as a comment, as we're looking at the budgets over the next few years and the financial forecasts, I think it's part of what we need to explain to the community is I don't see any scenario where it's possible to continue all of our current programs as we are right now and just hope that something's going to get better. I don't, I don't see that as being in the cards because not only are our costs higher than any possibility of revenue increase, which is flat or declining right now, we have some other things that are going to happen to us with the second hit of PERS increases that happened in 1314, which is likely to be another $2 million more on top of the situation we have right now. So, I, you know, unless you see something different than I do, I think we're in a time period where we've really got to contract to what can be supported by our current revenue, which is more than just a cut, because it's a cut for what gets us to the current revenue and then what also prepares us for these additional cost bumps that we're going to have over the next few years.
Even if I'm far too pessimistic and things come on more strongly in the first half of the year, they won't show up in revenue growth for another year, probably. There'll be a lag, especially if it's the US and it has to filter down to Oregon, it has to filter down to local levels. And even in those stories, there's not a lot of stories that get housing prices up and there are property valuations up. And as, you know, as the construction comes back, I really expect it to come back on relatively lower-value projects, again, multifamily, the lower end of the housing market, not the upper end of the housing market. So, even an optimistic story, I still think pushes a revenue increase out two years before you really start to feel some benefits from that. So, I think caution for the near term is the way, is the appropriate path.
Other questions? Mr. Motley?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your presentation. Clarify for me, your graphs and tables, when you referred to residential, whether it's permits or costs or whatever, refers to both owner-occupied and investment property?
That, those were residential building permits, so would be, you know, either or.
Okay. You're probably aware, the US House passed a bill last week that prohibits us from placing new taxes or increasing existing taxes on the wireless communication industry nationwide.
I, yes.
That's being passed to the Senate now. Couple of questions. One, I guess... One, I guess maybe a series. Do you expect that to be passed out of the Senate? Do you expect the executive to endorse it if it is passed? Do you see the federal government restricting our revenue capacity in other venues?
Well, I'm not enough of an expert on that particular question. And there's the, although it might not apply to us, the federal government's trying to get an issue of the sales tax for internet retailers resolved to open up some revenue possibilities for states there. But, but I'm not, I'm not significantly versed in the congressional attitude on this particular issue, I'm sorry.
Do you see any other, any other tax items that could be treated like the wireless industry?
I, I mean...
I understand they're trying to foster growth of it. They're trying to solve the sales tax problem, but...
You know, for whatever reason, well, I guess we know the reason, right? You had a new industry come up that looked like it was avenue for taxation for local levels because previous, previously that had occurred for those types of industries. And for whatever reason, obviously good lobbying, the federal government has stymied or is looking to stymie that. I'm not, off the top of my head, thinking of others. There's the Christmas tree tax. Oh, it's on hold again? Okay. 15 cents a Christmas tree. But I'm, I'm not well enough versed with what Congress is looking at and that, on those issues.
Do you see any possibility that they could delve into the area of fees that are not supported by demonstrable cost increases?
You mean for states, for local areas?
Yes, state and local government.
I think they're gonna, there's going to be some, that's going to be, there's going to be some limit to how far Congress is going to be willing to go into that venue because so many of those, those local fees and, you know, generating for local programs are really at the, at the, you know, the decisions of the local community. And you'd think that the wireless issue is unique in that standing for the power of their lobbyists. So I'm not, again, I'm cautious to think that there's a lot of, that Congress at this point is going to aggressively tackle the free structure of municipalities.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
I was wondering if you, in your research, have come upon other municipalities across the country that are doing anything particularly innovative that is helping them to weather the type of downturn that we're seeing here now with our revenue and the uptick with our expenses?
Well, I'm trying to think of examples that have crossed my path. And where you see the opportunity to take care of redundancies, so for example, in, for Eugene, we merged the administration of our fire departments with Springfield. So we had an opportunity to find a redundancy in the system and save some money there. So that's, that was an example of how this has been dealt with in other areas, is if you can find those efficiencies or redundancies. Unfortunately, again, a lot of those have already, already have been found. But I don't know of a lot of other specific examples beyond that, or beyond the very negative ones, like turning off the streetlights, right? Those are ways that people have dealt with this. Yeah, obviously cutting parks, parks and recreation is not uncommon too, so. But I think a lot of places are just running up the challenge that after two or three years, finding those redundancies, finding those efficiencies becomes ever more challenging.
Exactly. We're very concerned in this, in our community with a tremendous number of servicemen and women who are going to be returning from Iraq and Afghanistan. Have you heard or seen anything in your research that might indicate the federal government trying to be of assistance either in jobs or in housing for, you know, housing as an economic stimulus and also as a solution to, to the housing needs that they have when they come back?
I don't know that we've seen any new legislation at those levels or proposals at that levels. Certainly to the, to the extent that they're trying to shore up the VA health administration has been, I think, one of the main focuses for returning military personnel. So, for example, trying to build a new VA facility in Eugene is certainly, is something that's being dealt with right now. So, but that's the medical end. I don't know about the jobs or the, or the housing.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We really appreciate your time, your preparation and your time here with us this evening. It always is very helpful, even though it's a somber message that you bring, it is, it's a helpful message for us as we move forward with our budgeting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Just wanted to add my thanks. I really appreciate your insight and hope that we bring you back someday and it's, things are moving in a different direction.
That's right. Go spend crazy, spend like crazy. That's what you want to hear.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.